Welcome everyone. To get started, we will go to agenda. Message approved, motion on the floor. Proper second, all in favor say aye. Today, our invocation will be by Councilor Rick Carusa.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we pray that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge to make educated decisions. Thank you for today and every day you give us to walk on this earth. And as always, we pray for our servicemen and women to give us the freedom that we all enjoy every day. In Jesus' name we pray.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands on our nation. Move down into public comment and wish to address council, may do so in public comment, please state your name and address for the record. And we do have a sign up sheet and we'll go to that one first before we go to the three of them online. Judy Holspire. State your name and address for the record.
Judy Holspire, 310 Williams Road, Harrisburg. I wanted to mention my concerns about the playground. My husband Roger and I here for our two and a half year old grandson, great grandson. And the park has been a savior. We've been taking him there in the afternoons. Absolutely love it. Had him in the water park, now in the playground. He did run off before he was one of us to catch him. And I said, we need a fence. So I wrote to the park director. She said initially it wasn't installed with a fence. But the board at that time didn't like the looks of it. So I'm like, how do we get this done?
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wishing to address council? Well, also go to the phone, if you can raise your hand and we'll recognize you and unmute you. You guys help me out. You're done, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Question or答?
Got motion on the floor.
Second.
Proper second, all in favor say aye. Here, let's go to town manager report.
Thank you, good evening. Just have a few things to go over. Christmas tree lighting we had last Friday and our attendance was about 2,500 to 3,000 people. So that was our first Christmas tree lighting at Harrisburg Park. Was a very big success. We have some plans going forward of some alternative things that we can do to enhance that experience. So keep coming out and hopefully you'll continue to see some new things that'll make it even better. Disc golf, that is a new amenity for Harrisburg Park and Harris Depot Park. That is now open and fully playable. There will be signage that will be installed in each one of the holes. That we're waiting on right now and as soon as it does gets delivered, we'll be installing that. The want to remind everyone of the neighborhood meeting on December 16th. That has been canceled for lack of content. So there won't be a meeting this month. There is a special meeting that will be called for January 3rd at 6:00 PM. For the new council to discuss procedures at that point. And the holiday schedule. Let's see, we have the Christmas holiday, town offices will be closed on December 23rd, 24th and 27th. And for New Year's, the town offices will be closed on December 31st. And that's all that I have, have any questions? Brian Lee should be there for the finance report.
Good evening, mayor and council. If you could give me a screen sharing permission, please, James. All right, hopefully everyone can see my presentation now. So this is your December finance report as of November 30th. As always, we'll start off with the revenue and expense dashboard. Looking at revenues, the general fund and tax collections, which are reported in the general fund are showing in the red right now at 30% and 23% for the year. This is tracking as we usually do each year, falls behind a little bit at the beginning and then we have some pretty big deposits that come in around this time of the year. We did receive about a $5 million deposit on Friday, so that will be reflected in the next month's report. But that gets us ahead of schedule in both tax collections and general fund revenue. And is actually a little bit ahead of schedule of our property tax collections for last year. So really promising things there on the revenue side. Both water sewer and stormwater fund are right there at 43 and 41% thus far through the year. Departmental expenditures for operations, all the general fund, general government departments are in the green here, right around 33%. So there's no concerns there. Moving on to the rest of the general fund departments, all in the green except for parks and rec. Parks and rec was 4% ahead of where it should have been last month and it's 3% this month. So as we've been saying each month, the July 4th and special event expenses hit us at the beginning of the year and then we start to chip away at that and level out for the rest of the year. So everything is going as planned there. Both of our enterprise funds, water sewer and stormwater are well below budget at 30 and 23% and salaries townwide at 37%. I'll briefly go through some of our projects here, but please stop me if you have any specific questions. There's in addition to the list for the deputy office expansion, that's the second item on the list, see it up to 15%. This is using our ARPA funds. So that was approved last month and Public Works is getting everything picked out and ready to install there. Street resurfacing, as I said last month, Farmington Ridge and Rocky River Crossing have been completed. Some sections of Old Harrisburg has have also been completed. And in conjunction with the completion of the waterline project, that paving will also be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. Landscaping at Harrisburg Park, the proposal was approved at the November meeting and the work is already underway and should be finished in the first week of January. And Harris Depot Post Office, the concrete for the sidewalk and ADA parking has all been completed as well as the roof replacement. And the next step will be to work on the foundation repair. I move on to projects in design, not too much to report here, most of them just progressing as we would expect. The 21, 22 water lines are up to 80% though. For our multi-year projects in under construction, the only one I'll really report on here is the transportation bonds, the sidewalks on Caldwell Road. That is about 50% complete and the overall sidewalk project is at about 80%. For our equipment projects, we had a number of projects moved to complete this month. So our portable radios, advanced training mannequin for the fire department, a UTV and a water sewer tilt trailer were all put into service. And we have a zero turn mower that should be placed into service next month and then just a couple more items to finish out the year's projects. Our vehicle projects, not too much movement here, as we've said every month, we're just waiting on manufacturing and delivery of these vehicles. Some of the fire trucks, we have been notified that they are en route to us. So those should be getting to us and being placed in service in the next month or two. And we don't have any progress on professional service projects here as the three that we had underway this year are complete and our retail recruitment study is on hold. So quickly in the finance department, the audit financial statements were presented last month. We are awaiting LGC approval of those financial statements and once that happens, we will print and distribute copies of those financial statements to everyone. And then just as I'm required to do a report on the status of our ARPA grant each month. As I've said, there's no classification restrictions on the first 2.6 million and what looks like the entire 5.2 million. We have already appropriated 125,000 for our deputy office expansion and we have about 5.1 million left to appropriate. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Brian, I don't have any questions, that's why I congratulate you and your wife on the birth of your child.
Thank you very much, sir.
Deputies, I believe, having a take?
Good evening, folks. Apologize for taking such time to meet you up here. A little bit bigger than the tent, makes me. My gate's a little slow. Congratulations to the mayor and their and council members. Calls from service for November were 3,180. Security checks were 2,519. Traffic stops for November were 535. Our and Harrisburg total unit response had to all our calls for the month of November averaged seven minutes 34 seconds. Remember that's not emergency response time. And as of last month, there were no new crime trainings that we noticed last month. I will mention, we've kind of had several of that and also our community contributors with this. Been good consultants in the community and working with us as partners. We did have several arrests regarding vehicle break-ins and as I said, the community helped aid with that. Let us know something was going on, something was ungood, and then let us know. We also had several drug related arrests. One thing that I point out in regards to these arrests is that all of these were proactive police arrests. We we encounter these people, describe as they were. Last thing is advisements for all the citizens. The holidays are upon us. With the holidays, all the joy and all the things that come with the holiday. Crime transcends your lives. And with that, I will advise you all, when you're at the mall, shout. If you have any valuables that are in plain view, please put them in your trunk, put them on a receipt, lock them away. Don't leave anything in plain view. Lock your doors anyway, if you don't have anything in plain view. When you retire for the evening at your homes, lock your doors. Always lock your doors. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, congratulations.
Anything else? Good? Move along. I want to give a quick shout out to the to the employees of the town of Harrisburg for all the support that I've received over the years. This has been an amazing journey for all of us and the work that they've done in this community is just unbelievable. But there's one person I want to call out specifically, she's probably helped me more than anybody in the town of Harrisburg and that's Janet Ratcliffe. Thank you very much, I'd like you to have my point set up, a small token of my appreciation. I'll go to council.
Yes, mayor, I have a couple of announcements. I do want to echo what Lee said about this golf course. Jim and his staff has done an excellent job, along with Adam Abernathy, the superintendent. I I made all the meetings with Jim, Adam and Jason from the parking rec board. And we walked around with Russell, we designed it. Russell came up with the baskets, Adam did a phenomenal job getting the tees ready. Played multiple times. I even got a couple aces, believe it or not, but there's so many people I've met there from different parts of the country. They were coming here for Thanksgiving, we played it. They asked me how to thank the council and I just said, go on the parking rec website. Thank the council for approving the money to build it. It's definitely a great course, I've even gotten some. People reaching out from the Charlotte Disc Golf in the city of Charlotte, the one that helped us with the next one. So to Jim and his staff and Adam Abernathy, the superintendent. A big shout out for getting this thing done in a couple of months and it's really nice. Couple other things, and I hope the guys don't get mad at me, but I'm gonna give a little shout out to Troy Selberg. A little history of Troy and I ran for council 10 years ago. Walking down Camelot, Troy's on his porch, didn't know him from Adam. Went up, started talking to him. Learned a little bit about Troy being NASCAR crew chief. The wife, two kids, he asked me what I was, one of my things, what I wanted to run for and why I wanted to. We had a great conversation, it landed into a friendship over the last 10 years. Troy's involved in a lot of multiple boards, the YMCA and everything. And I just really want to thank him for his service for the last four years, it was definitely enjoyable. John Booth, eight years with John. His slogan was always the voice of reason, probably pretty good, John was quiet, spoke when he thought he should. We talked a few times early this year about voting on different things and he was saying that the way he voted, he listened to everything that was said. And then made his mind up and voted the way he thought he should vote. So Charlotte captain of the fire department, thank you for your eight years. Congratulations to you and your wife on your baby, knowing your new baby coming in a couple of months, about a month, I think. We saw her last weekend, she says she got about a month ago, so thanks a lot, John. Steve Sasha. I want to thank the Hot Bull Mayor. For all his knowledge and his accomplishments. He was a founder of the HYA years ago in the 90s. And it evolved into one of the most prominent youth sporting organizations in the county. Again, Steve, don't get mad at me because I didn't tell you I was gonna do this. He co-signed for the loan at the Strongness Road Park for the building of the concession stand, I didn't know this, and a four car garage. I just found out this recently, this week. He also co-signed for the loan on a concession stand of the original concession stand Harrisburg Park, which is no longer, because we built a new one. In the eight years on council and eight years as mayor, he has always kept Harrisburg on the forefront of dedicating many personal hours and make Harrisburg the best it can be. Harrisburg has grown under his leadership, making our town one of the top 50 best places to live in the United States. And a prime location for raising a family. And one of my big things is, I was a football film coordinator for six years for Hickory Ridge. And two years I helped Pat Helm in a wrestling program, my son played football and wrestle. And I always told Steve, nobody knows, nobody cares what you did before, is what you've done for me lately. So with that being said, thank you.
I'd like to say to the new council that's coming aboard here, congratulations and I'd like to say that my door is always open to you. And I extend, look forward in the next couple of weeks, meeting with each one of you individually. And hopefully be able to answer any questions that you may have and and get you started on the right foot. So just look for that phone call in the days ahead.
We're doing all business.
Troy, would you mind stepping up?
Get ready to start singing for us. So I've been given the honor of presenting each of the council and mayor that's leaving tonight. Their plaque of appreciation and have a few words I like to say about each one. You don't mind, I'll read it off here, make sure that I get it all because I know it's a lot, but I'll try to keep it quick.
So is this a roast?
I wouldn't do that. So Troy is a 30 year resident of the community, having always been involved in the development and the quality of life in Harrisburg. He was instrumental as a resident in fighting big box retail before his appointment to the planning and zoning advisory board. He pushed to update the howl and later as a council member pushed to mold the new UDO. Troy helps staff with new processes and procedures that will forever provide a standard of success. He was appointed by community peers for two terms on the Centralina Regional Council of Government, the executive board. Where he continued to provide positive quality of life changes here and in neighboring communities. His position at Centralina played an important role at bringing together community leaders and getting interest in our future train station. Troy's passion for arts lead to the cofound, led to the co-founding of the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee and the multicultural festival. And his love of sports led to the introduction of new cricket fields at our new park. Troy continues his involvement with the community through his executive board position at the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. By supporting and empowering teachers, giving them resources they needed to set students up for success. He also has a seat on the Harrisburg YMCA board, working side by side with our neighbors to build a new facility. Making sure that everyone, regardless of age, income or background, has the opportunity to learn, grow and thrive. I am extremely appreciative of everything you've done and it's been an absolute pleasure getting to work with you. Thank you for everything you've done and I wish you the very best in the future. So John has lived in Harrisburg for over 10 years and has been a member of the town council since 2013. He spent two of those years as a mayor pro temp. During his tenure, he focused on long-term financial planning, a new public works facility, new fire stations, a new park. And in his own words, valuing the employees that truly make the town so special. It has been an absolute privilege to work with John over these last eight years and I wish you nothing but the best. Hey, Steve Sasha. So Steve has lived in Harrisburg for over 24 years. For the last 16 of those, he has been involved with this board. In 2005, he formally began that period, serving two terms as town, a town council member. He then went on to serve two terms as mayor. During this time, he served the town when its population was about 5,000 and is now over 18,000. We have transitioned from a staff of less than 25 to now over 110. The town has also gone from a town administrator form of government to a council manager form. The town, needless to say, he has witnessed a tremendous amount of growth in the town. This is further evident in that after serving for seven years as president of the Harrisburg Youth Association. He facilitated the transition to a department within the town to create the town's first park and recreation department. Other significant contributions were the creation of the Harrisburg Business Alliance, Harrisburg Arts Culture and Heritage Committee and the Racial Equity Task Force. Steve also created community chats to allow residents to meet with council in a more informal setting to ask questions and become better informed about what's happening in the community. Steve is currently the board chairman for the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County. He has educated parents and youth on underage drinking through the Talk It Out Speakers Bureau. And for his efforts to reduce underage drinking, Steve was awarded the order of the longleaf pine by the governor in 2015. This award is the highest, most prestigious civilian award for exemplary service to the state. With all of that, I'd like to express my deepest gratitude as both an employee and a resident of the town for everything you've done. And it's been an honor to work with you and I wish you the very best in the future.
Now we're gonna move on to installing our new members, so we will start with our new mayor, Jennifer T. So you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. And just repeat after me.
I, Jennifer T. I, Jennifer T, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will maintain the constitutions and laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As mayor for the town of Harrisburg, so help me God.
As mayor for the town of Harrisburg, so help me God.
Good, yes, congratulations. To sign this.
Okay, let's do Alting Hotel. That's in one battle? I know, we did this backwards too. Okay, I, Alting Hotel.
I, Alting Hotel, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the constitution. That I will support and maintain the constitution and laws of the United States and laws of the United States. And the constitution and laws of North Carolina and constitution and laws of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith, not inconsistent therewith. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As councilperson for the town of Harrisburg, so help me God.
As councilperson for the town of Harrisburg, so help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And Maurice Price. Wait till everybody gets up.
Yes.
All right. I, Maurice Price Junior.
I, Maurice Price Junior.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the constitution.
That I will support and maintain the constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As councilperson for the town of Harrisburg.
As councilperson for the town of Harrisburg, so help me God.
Very good, congratulations. And last but not least, Diamond, and I know you have someone special to do your swearing in.
Thank you Judge Juanita Bogalala for doing this.
Mom, I appreciate you. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Diamond Staten Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The constitution.
The constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution.
And the constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As councilperson.
As councilperson.
For the town of Harrisburg.
For the town of Harrisburg.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we continue with the agenda, I would like to thank all that have served in elected positions before me. I would like to welcome our two new council members and our returning council members. We look forward to working together for the town of Harrisburg. So new business, we have a consideration of the two thousand and twenty-two appointments to the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Technical Coordinating Committee of the Cabarrus Rowan Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I would like to defer to Lee to give a little bit of background information about those.
Thank you, Mayor. So each year, the North Carolina Department of Transportation requires that the NPO supply a list of current TAC and TCC representatives along with their alternates. Currently, we've got Councilman Ron Smith as the appointed member and Councilwoman Diamond Staten-Williams as the alternate. Also, and those are for the TAC, for the TCC, which is our staff representatives. Those are Rob Donham as well as Sushil Nepal, which serves as the primary. So these TAC and TCC appointments must be available to attend regular meetings and also participate on regional transportation planning and committees. All currently appointed and alternate members have all acknowledged their willingness to continue in the roles. So staff recommend reappointing all four of these individuals to their same positions from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Lee. Council, are there any discussions or questions about these appointments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to a brief.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Our second consideration is for the appointment to the WASAC Board of Directors for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. And I again will defer to Lee for a little bit of background information on that appointment as well.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County, otherwise known as WASAC, requires the town to appoint a member of the town to their Board of Directors along with a designated alternative on an annual basis. Currently, Steve Shaw Shaw is the town's appointed board member with the former town manager as alternate. Obviously, both of those people are no longer here, so we've got to replace those. Most members of WASAC Board are public works or engineering directors or town managers that have the appropriate background in water and sewer treatment and the collection utilities to be effective members. Ron Donham, Rob Donham. No, sorry. So Rob Donham, our interim assistant town manager and also our engineering and public works director. As long, as well as Mallory Hodgson, which is our civil engineer, have the necessary background and the working knowledge to be considered suitable candidates. Furthermore, their working knowledge of the town's arrangements with WASAC, in particular the current capacity allocation models would prove to be valuable assets to the board. Therefore, staff recommends appointing Rob Donham to the WASAC Board of Directors for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-two with Mallory Hodgson as the alternate.
Great, thank you, Lee. Are there any discussion or questions from council on these appointments? Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. Do not believe we have any action items for this, for this meeting.
No, we haven't.
Might be the first time in a while we haven't had action items. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to move into closed session to discuss personnel. Second?
Second.
All in favor?